Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Can you guys hear me okay? Are you, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you fine.
Okay, let me call this meeting to order. Please stand and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we begin with the roll call.
Commissioner Powers.
Here.
Commissioner Howgie.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Demeté.
Here.
Commissioner Dolgren.
Here.
Commissioner Herzog.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, welcome everyone. Today is September twenty second Planning Commission meeting. We want to go ahead and make sure that everyone knows that today's meeting is open in person and also may be observed online through the Placer County website. In an effort to encourage the public to engage in the process, our public comment for this meeting will be offered in person and through a remote process. Citizens who wish to comment virtually today should be prepared to comment via the Zoom platform. To join online, click the link on the Planning Commission homepage. Please make sure to mute your microphone. You may also call in using a toll-free number, which is eight 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 seven eight eight zero zero nine nine. Or you can call another number. If you don't like that one, eight seven seven eight five three five two four seven. And please enter the webinar ID number, which is eight three zero four three two one one four eight eight. And if you're calling in, you need to press star six to mute yourself. If you'd like to make public comment virtually, please raise your hand with the hand icon at the bottom of the page. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. And please be prepared to speak at the time I open public comment, which could be for items not on the agenda. It could be for consent items, or it can be a timed item. If attending in person today, we kindly request that once you have commented on an item, return to your seat or leave through the exit door. I think we'll call it this front door here. And please respect that as we try to preserve the safety and health of all those that are participating today. We'll start with the Planning Directors' Report, EJ.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, and Commissioners on, do we have Commissioners on Zoom?
We do.
We do.
We do.
Okay. Welcome to Tahoe. I think it's been since pre-pandemic, since we've had a planning commission meeting up here. I know the board's been up here several times. So glad we're making a presence here and I'm guessing that we'll have more meetings up here in the coming years. So anyway, a quick update on recent action by the Board of Supervisors. We were at the board on September thirteenth to hear a couple items that the Commission had taken action on. One was a buck salvage appeal. The board upheld that appeal and approved the parcel map modification, consistent with the planning commission's recommendation. The board also considered the zoning text amendment. They approved that package in its entirety with the exception of the residential care homes. As you remember, we had quite a bit of discussion on the residential care homes. They decided they were going to hold a workshop with the board on that issue as far as where those usage could be allowed or not allowed. My, I believe that's going to be scheduled late November, if I'm not mistaken, but before the end of the year, they'll have a workshop on that. But the rest of the ZTA was approved as recommended by your Commission. And then the board also rescinded the approvals for the Mardis Valley West Parcel Specific Plan. And that was in response to the recent court action. We'll take a minute here just to, and to just make sure we're operational. We all good? Let's see, our next item at the board will be this coming Tuesday. The board will be taking up the Gateway Village Residential Project. And then on October eleventh, looking ahead at the board meeting, the Auburn Equipment Rezone will be going forward. And then Cedar is also going to be presenting an overview of permit activity in the county and asking for resources to address increased demand for services within Cedar. So that's at the board on October eleventh. Our next Planning Commission meeting is going to be October thirteenth. That's going to be down in Auburn. And it's the full agenda, so plan on a whole day. There's a mix of items before you. We have a nuisance abatement. There's an appeal. We have a draft IR meeting for the Mud Solar Project out in West Placer. We also have a couple Granite Bay projects that are coming forward, so a full agenda. And then the next meeting after that will be October twenty seventh. That agenda is to be determined. That is all I have. You have any questions?
Any questions? Commissioners? I can't see the online folks. But do those Commissioners have?
No questions. Questions?
Okay.
No question.
Okay.
There they are. Great, thank you.
I want to do a check with the audience. If you're here to speak from the public on any item today, if you want to speak in the public, will you raise your hand right now and just indicate that to me? So no one here in person. Do we have people online? Okay. I just want to make sure we don't miss anyone. I know that our agenda can be a little confusing. And so we're going to start with public comment for items that are not on the agenda. So anything you wish to bring up to the Commission that we don't have on the agenda, this is your time to speak on any item related to Placer County. So I'm going to start with that. Open up for public comment. I don't believe anyone here in person, but we'll pause for a moment for delay for online. So if you're online and you wish to speak on items that are not on our agenda, please raise your hand. Okay, I'll close public comment for that. We can move to consent. We have one item. It's just minutes. And so we can entertain. Let me check in Commissioners, would you like to poll that item? Anyone? I can't see the online, but I'll trust that they'll speak up if they have something to say. Anyone in the public here or online wish to poll consent agenda item or one item? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for consent.
Mister Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent item.
Second.
Okay, first and second, by Commissioner Johnson's second. And we'll go ahead and take a vote. Roll call vote on that.
Commissioner Powers.
Aye.
Commissioner Howgie.
Yes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Demeté.
I'm staying. I was not here.
Commissioner Dolgren.
Yes.
Commissioner Herzog.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to our timed items. And so members of the public may now raise their hand, press star nine if you're calling in to begin queuing in for public comment. We're moving on to our first timed item. North Tahoe Eastern Placer Partnerships and Regulatory Framework. Members, go ahead and raise your hand if you'd like to comment on this and we'll, we'll call you in order. Once the presentation is complete, Stephanie Holloway, Deputy CEO for Tahoe, and Julie Reagan with the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency will be presenting on this item.
Great. Well, good morning Commissioners. Welcome to Tahoe again. I was reflecting coming in this morning, just you had asked me what the outlook for weather would have been like a week ago for your presence here today. I might have given you a little different story, but with the rain and all the weather change that we've had, we're blessed to have such a beautiful day to host you here in Tahoe this morning. So, and it sounds like we have a pretty large lineup of all things Tahoe. I'm happy to kick off this morning, give you really, I think, a deep dive on a number of different partnerships that we are involved in in Eastern Placer. Really a unique framework for the county, a lot of different partners and focus here in Eastern Placer. And so I hope today is educational for you from that aspect. So, like I said, excited to talk to you about our partnerships. So I've had a front row seat in learning and also engaging in many of these partners over the last twelve months, really coming to appreciate how this Eastern Placer engine works together. So the goal today is really to layer in and kind of help educate yourself and the public on how those partnerships work together. So I'll just take a quick stop here at our agenda. Like you mentioned, Julie Reagan with TRPA is here to co-present this item for me today. So again, the goal here to layer on really these partnerships in Eastern Placer, focusing on really key goals from the Tahoe Regional Planning Agencies, regional plan, transportation plan, their EIP, our area plan, our transportation plan, which takes a little deeper dive on Eastern Placer as a whole. And then also want to talk to you about the tourism master plan and many of our economic incentives that the board has supported in Eastern Placer from a tourism-based perspective. Lastly, just want to give you an overview of several of their ongoing discussions with the community and also highlight some of our current priorities and focus areas. So let me start here. Layering on first layer, number one, our regional partners. Many governmental partners here in the basin and in the region. The Tahoe Basin is presided over by the federal and state government through our By State Compact, which was created in nineteen sixty-nine. It established TRPA and TTD. And like I said, Julie Reagan is here to really give you their overall goals and mission around that. But there's also several other key partners you see on the screen here from the state and federal level, really focused on conservation, protection of our natural environment and really working together to protect the environment, but also as our focus is really sustaining community. The Tahoe, California Tahoe Conservancy up there in the upper right. The US Forest Service, state parks, we're on state park property or near state park property here today, and then Cal Fire. I'll just say outside of the basin specifically, we're working very closely with our partners in Nevada County and the town of Truckee. They are key partners in this region for us as we talk about regional efforts in the resort triangle. So you'll hear me talk about the resort triangle a lot today. Truckee in Nevada County being kind of at the, at the point of our, our triangle and our efforts there. Inside the basin, I've already mentioned TRPA and TTD, but there's six local jurisdictions, four counties, two cities, City of South Lake Tahoe and actually Carson City in Nevada has a small portion in the basin that really, that you know, those partners are convened through TRPA, through TTD and our partnerships there. So just talk, I'll key in Julie here with a little bit with TRPA. So TRPA's mission is really to lead a cooperative effort to preserve, restore, and enhance both the natural environment of our precious resources here, but also the human environment within Lake Tahoe, promoting community and engagement, interactions of people with that environment. So with that, I'm going to hand this over to Julie. She's got a number of slides to present and then I'll, I'll be back to give you some more Placer County focus. Julie.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you very much, Stephanie. It is a pleasure to be here. I'm Julie Reagan and I am the Deputy Director and Chief of External Affairs at the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. I have been with the agency for coming up on nineteen years, so I'm very happy to give you a little perspective about the partnerships that Stephanie just mentioned. And let me do that by first thanking you for your service to the community. Public policy starts with a great idea, gets codified into ordinances or law. But then when it rolls down into implementation, it's the service of folks like yourself and many of our partners that actually see it through. And it can be very challenging, so I want to thank you for your efforts. And rather than get into the weeds of heightened density and all the things that you usually wrestle with in zoning, I'm going to just talk more big picture about these partnerships, a little bit of the history to give you perspective on the Tahoe story, because it's actually quite fascinating in this story of collaboration and partnership. And I won't go through the history, but I think some of you are familiar. We're, we're here on the ancestral lands of the Washu tribe and they lived in harmony with the land for ten thousand years. And then in the eighteen hundreds, when European settlers arrived, we started changing things pretty dramatically on the landscape in the upper right picture during the Comstock load era of the silver mining in Nevada. It changed this character of the forest forever. It's hard to believe today, looking out at this beautiful scene that nearly two thirds of the logs were removed. The trees were logged for the silver mining operations. And what grew back was an overly dense forest, and that is what we're dealing in terms of wildfire today, one of many of the challenges that we're dealing with. And then, of course, then Squaw Valley, now Palisades Tahoe hosted the Winter Olympics in nineteen sixty. And the development boom was on for Tahoe, and that really is a key ingredient of the story of how we've evolved these partnerships. And then what precipitated the creation of this interstate compact, which Stephanie mentioned. Just looking, this is just a telling story in a picture, you know, worth a thousand words. If you look back at the turn of, you know, the early part of the century in the nineteen thirties, there was a huge call to make Lake Tahoe a national park. But ironically, even John Muir wanted Lake Tahoe to be a national park. Ironically, there was too much private development already, and because of the impacts of the logging of the, of the Comstock era, folks thought it was too disturbed to even be considered as a national park. So we then went forward and there was a very big development boom. On the picture on the right is a photo of the Tahoe Keys, the same area, what once was probably the largest natural wetland area in the entire Sierra Nevada, which the Upper Truckee River goes into the Tahoe Keys on the south shore empties into the lake, is now one of the most disturbed watersheds. And at the time, it was incredible. It was live at the high elevation of the lake in the sky. We have the promotional flyers in our historical archives of the day of how wonderful to live here, but we created these lagoons and filled in the wetlands and things that we just know scientifically today have really altered the watershed and made sediment flow much worse into the lake. And so this is what happens. You know, stormwater enters the lake. The roads act as conveyor belts and they dump the sediment and the stormwater pollution. And the picture on the right is a storm event at the mouth of the Tahoe Keys. And so plumes of sediment just enter the lake and that is what has been clouding our world famous clarity where back in the sixties, you could see down a hundred feet into the lake. Today, we're in the sixty, seventy feet average. And so these alterations of the watershed over time have clouded our clarity. And so there was a huge outcry in the sixties to conserve Lake Tahoe. And what happened was quite incredible. The governor at the time of California was Ronald Reagan and the governor of Nevada was Paul Laxalt. They became friends. So the power of partnership and the power of relationships really dates back to this time. They established identical legislation in both states and interstate compact. Now, there's lots of interstate compacts in our country. Thank Port Authority of New York and New Jersey for transportation. There are about a hundred natural resource compacts. Only one like ours, the general accountability, the Government Accountability Office in Washington did a study about fifteen years ago of compacts. And there's none set up exactly like ours, where we have a watershed-based governance model where we manage growth and development and all many elements of our regional plan in partnership with our local governments, with the private sector, and with our other state and federal partners. But it went back to the compact of nineteen sixty-nine and this friendship where the two governors said, we do not want the lake to turn gray on our watch. And so what evolved was a pretty strong regulatory focus in the early years. But we have evolved so far from that into a model of partnership. We call it epic collaboration. Here in Tahoe, if you hear that term, that is what it takes because there are a lot of cooks in the kitchen. We have about ten federal agencies that operate in Tahoe, the Forest Service, obviously the biggest one, as Stephanie mentioned, they manage about eighty percent of the landmass in Tahoe is federal land. We have two states, multiple jurisdictions. And so what our charge through the compact is in this unique governance structure is to really lead this partnership and to balance and harmonize our natural landscape with a community, because we're not a national park. We have communities, we have businesses, we have tourism. We have a lot of challenges to manage and to harmonize those. So taking you through that early days of the nineteen sixties and seventies, we still had extensive growth where we actually developed close to seventy-five percent of wetlands, just like the one you saw in the Tahoe Keys on the south end. But pretty much any flat area around the lake was a wetland and we've built on it. We're sitting on it right here today because that was the easiest place to build. But we've realized that we have altered that natural landscape and we have to go back and retrofit those areas to protect water quality. So our partnerships had struggled in the early days, lots of litigation. In nineteen eighty-seven, we came up with a regional plan that was a consensus-based plan and we've been implementing that ever since. But we got to a point in the nineties where we said regulation alone is not going to achieve these very lofty environmental goals that we have for the region in the areas of water quality, air, scenic vegetation. There are all category of ten different standards that we have to meet by law under the interstate compact. And we knew that regulation alone was not going to get us there because we had slowed the growth and development. So we came up with what we call the Environmental Improvement Program or EIP. We'll quiz you on your Tahoe acronyms at the end of the day, but EIP is one you'll hear a lot because Placer County is one of our absolute key partners in this restoration initiative, looking at restoring, going back and actually putting capital investment in the watershed. And so we've been doing this now for twenty-five years in the areas of water quality, forest health, forest thinning, cleaning and draining and drying boats and clean water craft for invasive species. And then in twenty twelve, we're coming up on the ten-year anniversary of the major update of our regional plan. In December, we will celebrate that, and that's what we'll talk a little bit about as we move forward in the regional plan framework that you are very involved with, with your area plan and implementation. And of course, the, the challenge of the day is climate. We're seeing it with the era of mega fires, the threats of invasive species, the lake is warming, the air is warming. That poses a whole host of challenges that we have going forward. But we have this foundation of the Environmental Improvement Program to build on, and we've been doing this now for twenty-five, twenty-six years. We have a Tahoe Summit every August where we celebrate this, where our senators, our governors, local officials come together. It started in nineteen ninety-seven when President Clinton and Vice President Gore came and an executive order was created to bring more funding from the federal government, given the high share of federal land here, as well as just the recognition that Lake Tahoe is a national treasure. And so here's an additional graphic that I know I do not expect anyone to read the names on the chart, but to add to this massive partnership, it goes beyond our main sectors of local and state and federal government into our local utility districts, our water and sewer infrastructure providers, our fire district, fire service partners, and then far-reaching agencies in both states of California and Nevada with TRPA as the convener of this EIP partnership. And really, the EIP is the capital investment strategy to achieve our goals in the regional plan. The EIP is structured into these four areas, watersheds and water quality, forest health, sustainable recreation and transportation, science stewardship and accountability. And we have hundreds of projects that are going under each of those categories, many of which, right here in Kings Beach, was one of them, you know, sixty-five million dollar investment in the Kings Beach Commercial Core. And that was a water quality benefit and improved the quality of life and economic vitality of Kings Beach. But that was categorized as one of seven hundred projects in the EIP, just to give you an example of what that means. And of course, these projects are designed to protect our environment. But what we've found over the years is that these projects are economic drivers for the region. We're famous for saying in Tahoe that the economy is the environment and the environment is the economy at Lake Tahoe. And so we took the time to study this with an economist a couple of years ago. And we're looking at job creation of in the tune of seventeen hundred jobs a year from this program. When you, when you break down all the projects, the hundreds and hundreds of projects that have been implemented over these last twenty-five years, we have a dollar value and we track these and we look at private sector, you know, direct and indirect benefits and investments from the public sector because we've been fortunate now to invest two point seven billion dollars. It's increased since this slide to two seven point seven billion. I just checked last night to get the latest figures. The large amount of that was public sector dollars, federal, California, Nevada, and local governments. And whenever we get the benefit of receiving those funds, our benefactors want to know, what did you do with the money? What use has it gone to? What is the economic impact? And so we now have an ability to quantify that we are a good investment because we've organized this partnership to deliver projects on the ground, which are making a difference in the health of the lake. And we've seen as we track our indicators and monitoring over time, we are making a difference in these various categories of environmental protection while at the same time creating sustainable economic vitality in our communities. So our regional plan really embraces this capital restoration. In addition to the general land use and policy work that we do on the ground with growth and development, transportation is an element I wanted to touch on because it is front and center with the conversations in our communities today. TRPA also serves as what's known as the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization. We're the smallest in the country because we have such a small rural population, but we got a special dispensation in the Congress to recognize our unique situation with visitor influx with a very, in a rural place adjacent to abundant public lands. So we actually, as our governing board convenes, we have the Forest Service that joins us to pass money from the federal government, USDOT, into local governments like Placer County, and we make those actions all the time at our governing board level. And I should mention, our governing board consists of fifteen members, seven from Nevada, seven from California, and one non-voting presidential appointee. So we go from the big picture policy right down to local permitting, planning and zoning through the regional plan framework. And the big takeaway of our framework ten years ago when we updated the plan was to give more local permitting to the local governments and for allowing our agency to focus more at the regional level. Moving out of this very strict regulatory framework into more of a regional partner where we can bring bigger resources to bear and leave those local permitting decisions to local officials. And that's something that we're very squarely in the midst of implementing through the area planning process that Stephanie mentioned. A project we're of course all looking forward to is the Tahoe City Lodge, and that will be a showcase under our new redevelopment focus of the regional plan. We call it environmental redevelopment, redevelopment with a small r, if you will, because we're not building a lot of new, we don't have a lot of vacant land, we're not building new structures. We are doing a lot of teardowns and rebuilds and infill development. And at the same time, we are adding environmental benefits because most of these structures were developed many years ago. And so the Tahoe City Lodge here on the North Shore is something that we're all highly anticipating. So I'm just going to touch on funding of transportation because it's something that Placer County, the Board of Supervisors, was the first local government board to embrace a shared funding framework using that model of the EIP, Environmental Improvement Program, where each sector contributes additional monies. We have now gotten a commitment from the federal chair to bring seven million new dollars a year from California, Nevada to deliver seven together, four and a half Nevada, two and a half Nevada, that's two thirds, one third ratio of the, of the lake and seven million in the local and private sector with each sector saying, here's how we'll do it. No one size fits all, but we are twenty million short a year of investment for transportation to achieve the projects and to deliver the projects and our regional transportation plan. So this is something that you'll probably be hearing a lot more in the coming years. But we've just committed to work together through this collaborative framework to add more investment in the transportation space. So I just have a couple of slides left that I wanted to run through in terms of the hot topic of today. And that is something that we're calling destination stewardship. We get roughly fifteen million annual visitors lakewide on a year-round population of less than sixty thousand. We have roughly three times more visitors than Yosemite National Park on a landmass three times smaller. So think about the, the scale of that and the infrastructure that's needed. And tourism is the engine that drives our economy. So before COVID, we just, we discovered, as you probably have known, if you've been coming to Tahoe or a family or friends that come to Tahoe, we have a lot of issues. We have trash on the beach. We have human calls, wildfires. We have pet waste. We have invasive species. So we have developed this program and I wanted to share this with you, Take Care Tahoe, and encourage you to look it up, takecaretahoe.org. We have a messaging campaign to reach not only our visitors, but our locals. We do billboards about the fire danger. My absolute favorite is if it's your dog, it's your duty. You know, pick up after your pet and really make a positive difference when you visit Tahoe, respect this fragile environment. And we know this is important because people are coming to the great out And we know this is important because people are coming to the great outdoors. While many destinations shut down during COVID, we ramped up. Everyone was eager to get out to the great outdoors. And so folks came to Tahoe in droves. And we know that these folks are coming back. Many people that may have gone to Disneyland for their vacation started coming to go hiking and camping. And we will continue to see that trend climb. All the research is indicating that that is going to continue to grow. And our local residents, quite frankly, got concerned. We had picketing, saying tourists go home because there was such an influx and a congestion problem. And we knew that we had to grapple with these challenges because our local residents' quality of life was being affected by the influx of folks all at one time. It wasn't an overtourism problem every day of the year in every location, but in these, in these recreational hotspots, we're in one right here. It was everyone wanting to be at the same place at the same time. So we started working with our local marketing organizations, destination, destination marketing organizations or DMOs are now at the table, the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association, which of course Placer County is a part of. That's a great message from, from Tony, the new CEO on the North Shore, saying, we are actually getting into the stewardship business. We're not just about marketing a destination anymore. And so is the South Shore. We have the Town of Truckee. We just actually had Reno, the Reno Tahoe Reno Sparks Convention and Visitor Authority join this partnership because we know our travelers are coming from northern Nevada as well. And we're asking folks to take a travel pledge to protect the area when they are coming here. This is happening all over the country. There are resort destinations from the Tetons to Vail, Colorado, to Cape Cod, that are doing the same thing, looking at this issue of stewardship. And how do we enlist our visitors in the protection of the lake? Because we know from data that the, the travelers of today, they want to go to a place that is protected and they want to be part of that solution. So we have a number of coordinating committees that are working together on litter pickups and trash, volunteers, visitor pledges through the take care, parking enforcement, that's always an issue that we are continuing to work on. As well as ambassadors at trailheads, we have a lot of folks that are coming to Tahoe that have never hiked and don't have that knowledge of leave no trace, pack it in, pack it out. So we actually are working with local schools to volunteer and have not only students but volunteers be at the hotspots around the Tahoe Basin, the recreational trailheads to have a conversation with folks and educate them about here's where the bathroom facilities are. Here are where the trashcans are. And hey, this trail is pretty crowded. Maybe you want to try one down the road. That's kind of education is underway. We're billing this all under this envelope of destination stewardship. And we have a series of workshops that are coming up. We've been talking with our community through a series of listening sessions, starting this May, going through the summer, talking to local businesses, talking to community members, looking at the future of how can we make our sustainable economy work not only for businesses but also our community's quality of life and to the benefit of the Tahoe Basin's environment. So we're looking at a responsible tourism strategy. It's under development. And it is never easy. There are always a lot of great points of view in Tahoe. But the one thing we all have in common is that we love this lake and we want to work together to preserve it. So we have a series of workshops coming up here at the end of the month. And we'll sure to, be sure to make this information available to your teams and to all the policy leaders in Placer County. Certainly Supervisor Gustafson is the Chair of our governing board. Cindy Gustafson is an incredible leader and is super supportive of all this work. And for the first time, we have land managers like the Forest Service and State Parks at the table with visitors authorities, with TRPA nonprofits like the Tahoe Fund and many other partners, including the tribe, to have a shared table and to have a shared vision for the future of stewardship Tahoe. Because we know that tourism will always drive our economy. But we want to leverage that to invest in the future in a way that honors and respects this environmental tradition that we have. But recognizing that we have an economy that has been struggling in recent years and we need to support it as well. So I wanted to flag that as an area that we can work together on. And then I know your next item is going to be about area planning. And I wanted just to say a quick word and to also introduce Jen Self, who is here with me from TRPA, one of our top planners who works with local governments and implementing these area plans. Because the concepts evolve from this place of policy direction and then we implement it right down into, you know, the height and density of our neighborhoods. And we get into this conversation around the area planning process and we've had some great success right here in Placer County and have held up Placer County really as a showcase for how other areas around the lake can embrace this notion of a regional goal, but implement it in a way that suits the needs of your local residents. Because we know that the North Shore has different issues, different areas of concern than we might on the South Shore or in Incline Village in other places around the lake. So the area planning process is truly designed to serve the needs of your communities, working within the constraints sometimes or the framework overall of that interstate compact to benefit Lake Tahoe as a whole. So I, I very much appreciate your time and attention. It is a delight to be here and to be in person on this fantastic day. And let me just say, on behalf of our staff and our board, we value these relationships and partnerships to such a great deal. I'm excited, you know, to work into the future to solve these challenges together with you and really invite your partnership to come and do a tour with us at any time. Anyone who's interested to get out in the field and see some of these additional projects here in Placer County or even in other parts of the lake, we'll make ourselves available to do that. So thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie and Stephanie.
I have some more.
Okay.
If you're have an appetite for more. Okay. So great. Thanks, Julie. It's really an honor to present here with TRPA this morning. So again, I'm, I'm going to kind of come back, bring us back to all things Placer County. I really appreciate the framework from the regional perspective. Just to kind of double down here on our basin area plan, you know, that, again, the framework that you all work within when we talk about regulation and, and land use permitting. Also wanted to mention our resort triangle transportation plan. This was an effort that really, again, feeds off of the regional plan, TRPA's regional transportation plan. As you know, within Eastern Placer, we have areas in and out of the basin. So this is really an effort to, you know, give more of a granular look at transportation. One of the unique attributes of the county level is that we're not only a layer of regulation designated within the basin from TRPA on a number of fronts, but we're also implementers. And so when we think about transportation, a lot of the big projects that are in these plans, you know, there, there are many partners implementing transportation. But I just want to put a shout out to our Public Works crew because they are really working, working hard on a number of these different efforts. So let me just also mention our, our TART Systems Plan. So the Tahoe Truckee Area Regional Transit System. This was a plan that was put into place in, and approved by our board in twenty sixteen, right around the time that we were developing this new Tahoe Basin Area Plan. Really a focus on expansion of transit service within the resort triangle. I will again mention twenty seventeen was our consolidated land use plan, really focusing on concentration of redevelopment within our town centers. So Kings Beach, Tahoe City, really an area that we wanted to focus concentrated development so that we have more of a framework around multimodal, around vibrant town centers, drives economy, it drives stewardship from a, from a transportation perspective and really helping to lessen some of the impacts of, of overdevelopment. I will mention, again, just twenty nineteen was the adoption of the, of the Resort Triangle Transportation Plan. And anecdotally, if you're familiar with our TART Connect program, this is a microtransit program that we have here in the region, came out of that planning effort and has really gained a lot of steam, even on the South Shore. TTD and, and our partners down there have implemented microtransit as well. So again, just a map here, you can kind of orientate here on the resort triangle specifically. The areas in green are, are many of the transportation projects that we're actively working on from the Western approach here in the Kings Beach area to many of our trail networks. And I'll speak a little bit about trails here in a minute. Fanny Bridge is also another big project in the Tahoe City area. A portion of that project is complete. We are looking forward to completing the, the segment on old, what we call Old Eighty-Nine Fanny Bridge, the roundabout at the Y area and a complete streets project just south of there. So more to come on that. Just wanted to focus some, some of our town center specific improvements. Julie touched a little bit on the economy. I want to talk about some initiatives that the board has taken on incentivizing our economic development. So in twenty fifteen, the board adopted the North Lake Tahoe Economic Development Incentive Program. That's a mouthful. Was really came out of an economic study that we commissioned with EPS, outlined some barriers that we were feeling and experiencing to lodging development within North Lake Tahoe. The goals of that program here really to offset costs of developing lodging projects in the basin. We were also developing a commodities, a bank program for development rights within the area that allowed tourist accommodation unit investment. So also incentivizing environmental and economic revitalization. You can see here on the screen, the Tahoe City Lodge project, as Julie mentioned, was one of those projects that really, at the time, was, was something that the, the board and, and the economy was really striving for. So and then I'll just mention our tourism master plan. One of the goals of that economic study was to support the tourism master plan. And I'll come back to that. But really, that plan highlights, again, our need for additional lodging redevelopment within the basin. We did do another economic study in twenty twenty. BAE conducted that study, really looking at additional barriers that we had been experiencing. There'd been a number of years that had passed. And our board adopted it and they recommended and our board adopted a TOT rebate program. So moving forward, projects like Tahoe City Lodge could take advantage of an annual rebating of their requirements of TOT contribution. So let me dive into the tourism master plan. This document, another guiding document for investment in our economy in, in North Lake Tahoe was originally envisioned and put into play in nineteen ninety-five. So it does go back a ways. Was an engagement effort with local businesses, community members, the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association and members there of have really been partners in developing this plan with the county and implementing it, focusing on sustainable economy and tourism. You can see here on the screen, really the big pillars of our tourism master plan here focused on transportation, specifically trails and the trail network, marketing, sales, visitor information and visitor activities. The master plan was developed, like I said, in, in conjunction with a partnership with the NLTRA and was concurrent with our first voter ballot initiative of TOT in Eastern Placer. TOT existed. But I'll talk a little bit about the two, the additional two percent of TOT requirement that comes into play in Eastern Placer. So this document has been updated a number of times. Like I said, nineteen ninety-five was the original. It was updated in two thousand and four. You can see here on the screen. And then twenty fifteen was our most recent update. So a lot has changed since twenty fifteen. We're currently, you know, in, in conversations with the NLTRA about potentially a refresh on this. Some history on TOT. So transient occupancy tax, this is our resort tax, if you will, on lodging. As I already mentioned, Placer County has been committed to local financial investments in our community and implementing really a balanced approach to not only drawing visitors to our region, driving our economy, but also mitigating impacts. So you can see here, the TOT, the two percent TOT was originally voted in by voters in, in nineteen ninety-five. It came in and added to a total, added to the eight percent that is county-wide TOT requirement. So in Placer County, Eastern Placer, we have a ten percent TOT. It has been renewed a number of times over the year and most recently passed voter initiative on our ballot in June, Measure A. So let me get into a little bit of economic history here. Our economic cycle has ebbed and flowed over the years. As you can see, the TOT renewal and, and as I mentioned, the tourism master plan really have worked in partnership together over the years. Twenty-five years of, of, you know, visioning and economic planning as well as economic investment. So I'll just go back in nineteen ninety-five, the econ, you know, the economy was kind of stagnant. The plan really focused and allowed for tourism growth. So that was the, the focus of, and I would say organize, organizing sort of this vision around tourism and how do we do tourism in Eastern Placer. So during the first date update in twenty, two thousand and four, tourism at that time was booming. And really, the community was feeling a need for balance. So similar to kind of probably what we are feeling today. There was a need back in two thousand and four and a desire to really create balance. That document does talk about workforce housing. So workforce housing obviously is a buzzword for us here in Eastern Placer, but also in Western Placer, the need for housing and support for community to, and I think probably even more so highlighted here in Eastern Placer because of the need to really support our tourism economy, having the people, the workforce in place to really support the visitors that we know are coming. So twenty, twenty fifteen, the update was post-great recession. And again, heavier focus on building tourism, really stimulating our economy. And so that brings us to today, like I mentioned, hopefully post-pandemic era, the pendulum is swinging today again, and, and the focus is coming back to workforce housing, tourism mitigation. So a, a little bit of a cycle here. Obviously, the economies go through cycles. So just kind of wanted to highlight where we are in that continuum. So jumping just a bit back to, to TOT here, wanted to highlight really the board's commitment to in reinvesting that TOT. As you know, the tourism, sorry, the transient occupancy tax is a general fund tax. And so the board has authority to commit those tax funds as they see fit. The board has made this very strong commitment though, that a hundred percent of the TOT that is collected in Eastern Placer does come back to be supportive of everything in Eastern Placer. So I'll just mention again, you know, some of the, some of the focus of that promoting, sorry, promoting tourism and our economic welfare mitigating impacts. So a lot of common themes here, supporting our public infrastructure and looking to investments in the future. This is just the two percent ballot measure language from this June. There were a couple of changes here, you know, prior to, prior to June, there wasn't, it wasn't a specific call out for workforce housing needs. We did talk about, and, and the voters approved bringing that in, litter, trash, you know, and this question about long-term maintenance of our public infrastructure. I will say that this, this time round with the, with the ballot measure A and the passage of this additional two percent, we did, we were successful in committing this two percent moving forward until repealed by voters. So it had gone through a cycle of, of renewal every ten years. So we're happy to say that this, we feel like this is a, a bit of a longer term play for us on the additional two percent. Fingers crossed. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our special districts partners. So this is, I talked about that layering, talked about the governmental piece, some of the money, some of the economy. I really want to highlight the unique nature in Eastern Placer when it comes to our additional partners in the special districts area. So Eastern Placer, we're really unique on a service delivery model that we rely heavily on a number of, of different special districts from water, sewer, parks and rec, fire, schools, transportation, similar to other communities, but I would say even more so here in Eastern Placer that the county does rely heavily on these jurisdictions. And so the context to here, wanted to talk a little bit about a number of our transformative projects that have been implemented over the years. They're here on the screen. I won't read them for you. But I do want to highlight here that many of these projects were implemented not only by the county, as I said, as a, one of the key implementers in the region, but our special district. but our special districts. They're doing trails, they're doing maintenance of trails and a number of different key community supporting projects funded by TOT. And so just really highlighting the importance of, of those partnerships for us within the region. And then our community, our community partners. I, I would need four or five slides to get everybody on here. So I took kind of some of the, the key partners that we communicate with on a daily basis here. But really this is our last layer of support and, you know, our, our community partners really help us to unlock engagement within the community, our businesses, our private funding opportunities and private partnerships there. You know, many of the projects that we implement here in Eastern Placer take a private public partnership these days and a lot of strategy around, around funding, around permitting. So a lot of, like I said, key highlights here on the screen. I do want to just bring forward sort of three key community partners and, and community groups that we partner with. We specifically, the county and the board has designated for advisory, again, coming back to investment of, of general fund, of TOT fund within the region. So let me just talk a little bit about the capital projects advisory committee. This is a 13-member committee established. I should say, established in 2018. This committee actually has reside, been in existence longer than 2018. In its current form as the cap, the board did establish that back in 2018. So a lot of recent committees, a lot of recent plans and programming, kind of all hopefully bringing brought forward together here for you today. But the mission here really from the board to support investments and, and making organized investments of the, of the 2% that we, I talked about earlier. They do go through an annual grant program, grant cycle that we're getting ready to launch here, have, have launched actually this fall. So a number of different projects that are in the tourism master plan and therefore the 2% and the cap committee advisory. So all of that kind of comes together here. We took a recent survey of the cap committee. Really trying to make sure that we were still aligned with the goals and focus of the community needs. So you can see here workforce housing, that was brought into play with the passage of the, the 2% again here in June. Trails has been a huge focus of the tourism master plan and our focus of our investment over the years of the 2%. Still a huge, a huge area of focus for the cap committee and advisory to the board. So lots of other things on there. I won't belabor those, but really workforce housing, trails, transportation continuing to, to pop up as priorities. So let me just talk about our, my second highlight here, the Truckee North Tahoe Transportation Management Association, the TNT, TMA. It's a mouthful. You know, this is an organization that's been really focused on transportation advocacy. They're a nonprofit membership organization formed in 1990. So again, they've been around a long time. Really looking to advise on transportation needs. The key here, I think for them is they, they do really foster this public-private partnership, engaging in the community. Really seeking the, the needs from a, from a more cohesive and collaborative perspective. Another 13-member board of directors here led by two staff at the TNT, TMA. And then lastly, but not least, the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. Again, our partnership with them goes back a number of years. Their organization began in, I'll say, 1954 as the Chamber of Commerce in the area. The chamber then joined with the Visitors Bureau in 1995 and formed what is now NLTRA. As Julie mentioned, they are in a, they are in a state of refocus and transition again as our, sort of our destination stewardship organization, and we continue to partner with them. As many of you may know, the board did form our Tourism Business Improvement District. And the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association is very integral in administering the T-Bid for us in, in this region. So again, an agreement with them, a five-year commitment on the T-Bid, really looking at investments from a destination stewardship perspective. Also, I'll, I'll mention that, you know, the North Lake Tahoe Resource Resort Association used to be funded with TOT. They are now self-funded through an assessment. That freed, that freed up the, the money that we would have, you know, contracted with them. That's, that is what we're calling freed up TOT, has been focused on housing and transportation. So again, right there within the community's needs. Again, investing, investing that TOT back into the community. So I'm going to just quickly transition into some of our current priorities. I've already talked about these. I won't go into too much detail, but workforce housing. Hands down, one of our biggest challenges, like I said, to support our local economy. We continue to really devote resources. We're heavily connected with many of these organizations that you see, community organizations on the screen. We're really looking at this as a three-legged stool. We're looking at all opportunities for purchase, for new development, incentives that the board has already committed to around funding for lease options through our leased to locals program, but also some incentives about for first-time home buyers and, and people that are looking to get into home purchases in the region. I'll briefly go through transportation. We already talked about this, many of these already. But just to highlight on our mobility focus here and alternative transportation. There's a lot of infrastructure projects here on the screen. They do tie back into what we call more of a complete street, more of a, a mobility focus, enhancing our transit system so that we have options in the future through transit as opposed to the standard single occupancy vehicle. So a lot of, a lot of good work in here with our Public Works Department. And then last but not least, I'll just mention a lot of the other challenges. Julie touched on these through the EIP program, working in partnership with them, but climate change, fire resiliency, obviously, emergency preparedness. And then they, just the overall going costs of labor and what that does to a number of our projects, our funding commitments. All affecting our economy and delivery system. So with that, I just wanted to again, highlight the support of your planning commission, all of our partners within the region. Julie's term about, what was it? Goliath partnerships? Epic collaboration is very true. There's, there's a lot of, of my world and, and partnerships with many of these organizations that we do on really a daily, almost hourly basis. So happy to entertain any questions that you might have or any questions for Julie.
Thank you Stephanie and Julie for your wonderful presentations. It's important, a priority of ours to maintain, you know, Tahoe and its environment. So thank you for that. Commissioners, comments, questions?
I just want to say excellent presentation and thank you. And it's nice to see all the great collaborations that are happening and, and you can see it all over the basin. It's wonderful. Thank you so much for what you do.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you. That was an amazing presentation. I have a question on the TOT where it says short-term. Is it less than 30 days? Where the tax doesn't kick in if like somebody rents something for more than 30 days and taxes is not?
Yeah. So the, the TOT is only on short-term lodging rentals. Any long-term rentals isn't, are not required to pay TOT.
So what is considered short-term?
30 days. Yes.
That's right. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. Well, thank you. Very good presentations. Commissioners online? Online commissioners, anything to share, comment?
Just want to appreciate Julie and Stephanie for the presentation and the work they're doing.
Okay. Well, yeah, thank you. We'll open up for a public comment at this time. And anyone here in person which should speak? Anyone online? Okay. Well, closed public comment. And I just want to thank you also for your presentation. It's complicated. The partnerships, but it's important. And the good work you guys are doing is, is effective. And I get it. The stewardship leads to the environment, which leads to the economy. And it's a great train. So thank you for what you're doing. Anything else or should we move on to our next timed item? Okay. Thank you very much. Right. We're going to move on to our second timed item, Tahoe Basin Area Plan Economic Sustainability and Housing Amendments Workshop. Members of the public may now raise their hands. Press star nine for calling in to begin queuing in for public comment. Which you will, which will not begin until the presentation is complete. Emily Stetzer, Principal Planner, and Stacy Wydra, Senior Planner, will be presenting on this item.
Good morning, Emily Stetzer, Principal Planner, and I'm here with Stacy. I'll just wait for my slide to come up. Oh, do I need to hit it? Okay. Thank you. Okay. So we are here to follow up on Julian Stephanie's big picture explanations and kind of dive in, into a little more detail. In particular, we're talking about our Tahoe Basin Area Plan today and amendments related to the economic sustainability of our town centers and housing. So our area plan adopted in 2017. What is the guiding land use documentation for Placer County in the Tahoe Basin? So it governs our land use here. It encompasses the communities of North State Line in California, Kings Beach, Tahoe Vista, Cernelian Bay, Dollar Point, Tahoe City, Sunnyside, Homewood and Tahoma. And when we talk about our town centers, those in particular are Tahoe City and Kings Beach. The area plan was most recently amended in 2020 for housing and accessory dwelling unit or ADU updates, really to bring that into compliance with state law. So just to some background, since 2017, when that area plan was adopted, we have actually seen very few projects developed in our town centers. And very few workforce housing units have been developed across our region. And so a lot of leaders in the area and the community and the business associations have been wondering why. We did a lot of investment. We've put in roundabouts and sidewalk infrastructure. We developed a new area plan. So in 2019, the Tahoe CEO's Office of the County contracted with Bay Area Economics or BAE to conduct a study that would really analyze our economic sustainability needs for our town centers. Following that train, in the Tahoe Prosperity Center, which is a nonprofit that got, looks at economic development and community issues around the entire basin, also conducted similar reports in the last two years. And those three reports collectively are called Envision Tahoe. And you'll see a lot of similar themes in the recommendations and the challenges that were identified for development in our region. So that BAE study that the county worked with BAE to conduct really identified the causal forces and financial feasibility needs and gaps behind the lack of private investment that we would like to see. It also identified local government regulatory updates and incentives that could attract environmentally and economically beneficial reinvestment in town centers. And it developed recommendations to address issues identified in the analysis. So as a lot of the things that it pointed out were our lodging products in the North Lake Tahoe Basin are largely dated. We had at that time been seeing a decline in full-time population, which made it hard for businesses to sustain year-round here. And a lot of the tourism, for people to stay overnight, which brings in more dollars to the economy versus day trippers. In order to get that kind of high-quality tourism, you need more high-quality lodging products. So to really examine four types of projects that the county had been liking to see or that had been trending in development. BAE looked at these four prototypes and identified why we weren't getting them or what we could do to get them. And those are mixed-use residential, for-sale residential condominiums, limited-service hotels, and full-service condo tells or also called condo hotels. They really came down to four broad findings. We have a really high cost of development in the basin, probably not surprising. There's also a lot of uncertainty, risk and indirect costs if you want to develop here. And there's a complex entitlement and permitting process. You have to go through the county and you have to go through TRPA for many different land use entitlements. And there's a complex and prescriptive requirements that hinder project feasibility. And then on top of that, local conditions create a perception of increased risk. So because this type of project hasn't been built so far, other developers will think, oh, maybe that's because it's a risky environment in which to develop. So it may just be a perception because it hasn't been done yet. So BAE recommended a multi-pronged approach. One is to update that North Lake Tahoe Economic Incentives Program that Stephanie talked about. That includes the TOT rebate program right now. BAE added some additional recommendations which were to add to that program process in which we can allocate and prioritize distribution of our TRPA development rights. So things like tourist accommodation units, residential units of use, commercial floor area coverage, things like that. So this document could be expanded to talk about how we should prioritize, prioritize allocation of those rights. And then BAE also recommended creating an enhanced infrastructure finance district. One of the things we had been seeing is there are a lot of project requirements. For example, like curb, gutter, sidewalk, that fall on individual projects to create rather than bringing it forward as one complete plan that gets implemented. BAE also recommended process policy and code improvements, which is what we'll be talking about today. To facilitate development, to scale back some of those requirements, to alleviate constraints and challenges in the development process, and then to collaborate with TRPA on those code changes. Update parking standards and create parking districts. There's been a push to utilize the existing parking we have for the large, for a large part of our development. Encourage multimodal transportation. We don't need to necessarily build a lot more parking spaces. And then increase workforce housing allowances. And then relaxing the workforce housing mitigation and allocating funding to implement programs to attract and retain permanent residents was another big recommendation. I want to note that that's not necessarily relaxing our requirements for workforce housing overall. It was particularly targeted at the town centers because it was yet another burdensome requirement on top of all many others for development in the town centers. And BAE pointed out that we have many tools in our toolbox in which to require workforce housing and incentivize it as well. And just to bring it back, at that time, we did, we were really seeing a loss of permanent residents in the basin. And we still are compared to previous numbers, which I'll talk about, although COVID did help us a little bit with permanent resident influx. So when we go through and we think about the recommendations that BAE suggested, I'll, I'll list, I'll go through this list of on the left where the recommendations and then the status on the right because county staff have made a lot of progress in implementing these already. So for updating the North Lake Tahoe Economic Incentives Program, that document was most recently updated in June of 2022. It did add that TOT rebate to the program. Still pending and in conversations with staff and planning are to add that development rights allocation process and to implement an enhanced infrastructure finance district. For workforce housing recommendations, the county has implemented the Workforce Housing Preservation Program, which is a down payment assistance program in which the county gives 16% of the purchase price of a home to homeowners up here who are local workers to buy a house. And that's a grant. It's not a loan. It does not need And that's a grant. It's not a loan. It does not need to be paid back. In exchange, those buyers will deed-restrict their homes, so it can only be occupied or sold to local workers in the future. The idea was to create a secondary market of local worker housing. We've had two purchases so far, and we have a third in the works. Unfortunately, that program launched right as the prices were very high, and we had extremely limited inventory up here. So we're seeing a little more inventory now, so we hope to see even more purchases. That was adopted in February 2021 and launched last summer 2021. The board also recently approved this summer a lease-to-locals program, which pays homeowners to convert what was a second home or a vacation home to a long-term rental. That program is run by a company called Landing Locals, who administers the program for the county. And they've seen a lot of success in places like Truckee, South Lake Tahoe, and a number of mountain town communities in Colorado as well. So that just launched, and we are in the process of getting homeowners on board for that program. And both, the idea behind both of those is really to utilize our existing housing stock because we know it takes a while to develop new housing. And then for coordinating with TRPA on code changes, we have been working very closely with TRPA staff and have great relationships with them. We are participating in their Tahoe Living Working Group, which meets regularly to discuss potential code changes to TRPA code and coordinate with other jurisdictions and partners around the lake to really facilitate and make building workforce housing easier to accomplish. And then finally, we've updated that Affordable Housing and Employee Accommodation Ordinance, so that there were some exceptions of when that is required and when it is not required. That was approved in 2020 by the board, and the fee was most recently approved in April of this year. And that final recommendation from BAE was the Process Policy and Code Improvements, of which we'll go through today. So as we took that information from BAE and we started compiling the changes that we would make to the area plan, Tahoe Prosperity Center was also working on analysis for the basin as a whole. And it really is applicable to the changes we're proposing today. So I'll go through some of those. A lot of the findings that the Envision Tahoe reports came up with apply to the entire basin, but they are very applicable to North Tahoe as well. So for the population of Lake Tahoe Basin as a whole, over the past 10 years and 20 years even, our 20-year population decline, we had seen a 20-year population decline that reverted in 2019 and 2020 because of that influx of more permanent residents to the basin and to many rural areas across the country during COVID. Even with that influx of new residents, it's still lower than our 2,000 population count. For K through 12 public school enrollment, there was a decline in student population over the past five years. With residents with advanced degrees, we've seen a steady increase over the past 10 years, which suggests we actually have a pretty interesting and diverse talent pool in which we could really foster a different type of economy or a more diverse economic base. And then, as you've probably heard, home prices have skyrocketed in this timeframe. So in January of 2022, the basin as a whole's median home price was 950,000. Right now, it's just over 1 million. In North Tahoe, it was, I think, 1.3 a few months ago. Meanwhile, the median average wage in the Tahoe Basin is 53,000. So it's incredibly difficult to keep our local workers here. For the economy, our economy in Tahoe is really concentrated in three industry clusters, and they equal 95% of the economic output in the basin. And that's visitor services, environmental innovation, and health and wellness. All of those have experienced flat or declining job growth and economic output. So maybe not the best sectors to hang our hat on here. And for visitor-related businesses, those increased 40% to 62% of all economic activity in the basin. And then construction also really increased, and that does go through ebbs and flows. But that increased to become 12% of our job base here. And depending on the economy, that can be a really great business to be in or a not-so-great one. So the recommendations from the Envision Tahoe Reports are to strengthen our key industries. So really to support that tourism-related job shift to sectors like health and wellness and environmental innovation that can provide a more stable year-round economic base. To build skill pathways for upward mobility, so that would be building and collaborating with our partners on a region-wide skills programs and curriculum program. They suggested we jump-start innovation, and in order to do that, we would be supporting entrepreneurship, making it easier for those small businesses to get up and get started. As you can probably see as you drive through, we have a lot less of the big chain development and businesses that you might see more in West Placer than you would up here. And then really to work with our local chambers and business associations to help launch new businesses. And then for shaping the enabling environment, they suggest that we launch a well-coordinated public-private sector partnership to market health and wellness, recreation in the outdoors, and environmental innovation because those are more stable year-round economic bases. And then for tactical approaches, always, it's always a recommendation to accelerate workforce housing in our region and to improve and fund transportation and mobility. So we took the information from that BAE study. We started compiling our recommended amendments to this area plan. We also had, towards the end of this process, the Envision Tahoe documents come out. And then during this entire time, we also met with stakeholders to help get feedback on these amendments and what we should be looking at going forward. So we met with seven stakeholders from May to June 2021 and had pretty in-depth and very honest conversations with them. And they were all representatives of the Tahoe Basin Business and Development Community. So they ranged from design and architecture professionals to entrepreneurs, small business owners, and experienced developers who are experienced way beyond the Tahoe Basin, you know, like national developers. Our goals here were to solicit feedback on their experiences. How do we bring forward new business? How did they bring forward new business? Or development? What were their challenges? What can we learn from them and their process and experience? In order to help shape our proposed amendments. And then we really also wanted to understand that lack of investment from the private sector and development or redevelopment in our town centers. And just to bring that back, when we're talking about development and redevelopment, I really want to kind of remind you of what Julie was talking about in her presentation, that redevelopment in our town centers has a direct tie to improvement, to late clarity, because we get a lot of environmental improvements with redevelopment, improvements to runoff, et cetera. So we documented their feedback. A lot of it was involved, related to processing barriers, strict development standards, or required site improvements, particularly for small startups who may not own their property, maybe they're renting. It's really hard to say, put curb, gutter, and sidewalk in if you're just renting a place, a commercial space, and you're a small business startup. And then zoning restrictions, use permits, et cetera. So we took all that feedback and we used that to inform the amendments that Stacy will go into more detail on. Our goal here is really to streamline and facilitate a new, more diverse business sector, entrepreneurship, to get new quality lodging products and to accelerate and facilitate more workforce housing in the basin. We really want to diversify that business sector, facilitate more quality tourism and lodging, and then provide more opportunities for our workforce to live up here year-round and not only rent, but get into homeownership opportunities. So I will hand it over to Stacy, who will go through a lot of the details of our proposed amendments.
Good morning, Chair Hershag and fellow Planning Commissioners. It's great to see you guys. So thank you, Emily, also. So how do we get there? How do we try to implement what we've heard from our stakeholders? And moving forward, the Tahoe Basin Area Plan, or what I might mistake or refer to as the TBAP sometimes, just a little bit shorter to say. The TBAP contains two documents. Basically, the policy document and then the implementation regulations. And so as a result of these amendments, we looked at both of those documents. Obviously, the implementing regulations inform the policies and how we can actually implement the policies and goals that we want to gain out of our community development and so forth. And so when we looked at our policy document, there are quite a few sections that we are proposing to amend and/or add to. The first one being scenic resources. We are recommending that we add a new policy which supports reevaluation of our scenic requirements. And this is targeted to achieve, you know, private reinvestment in our town centers, targeted for both redevelopment and new development in manners that improve environmental conditions, creates more efficient or sustainable and less auto-dependent land use patterns, and also provides for those economic opportunities. In the vegetation section, we are recommending a policy to support implementation of new or expanded hardening green waste and defensible space incentive and/or rebate programs. And then also support high-speed broadband infrastructure capacity and support childcare facilities to meet the needs of our local workforce in our socioeconomic section of our policies. Moving to the town centers, we also looked at these policies and as they relate to existing conditions today. And we are recommending some new policies to address the allowance of groundwater interception for mixed-use projects in town centers. Support the streamlined process. Encourage active ground floor uses. Facilitate mobile vendors and food trucks in town centers. Support the retention and expansion of businesses within our region. Support relocations of industrial and public utility land uses in our town centers to free up those sites, to allow for more private development to come in. And also support parking maximums and creative parking solutions. Within the policy documents of community design, we also are recommending a policy to support and promote local artists and public art in North Tahoe. And then with regards to land use, as you guys learned by both Stephanie and Emily's presentation, also support a development and reservation conversion manual for our development rights. And so this is again in conjunction with TRPA. And then also support funding sources for frontage improvement implementation plans to achieve those overall infrastructure that we need, sidewalks, curbs, and gutters. And then implement parking management plans and develop a reservation and conversion manual. And then support the availability and development of mixed-use business park and light industrial space in our mixed-use policy section. And then redevelopment, we also looked at these policies and also added these policies to support the implementing regulation changes that I will go into in just a bit. But these are recommended to support and encourage adaptive reuse of vacant or underutilized retail and office space. Support redevelopment of lodging projects and revitalize those that we have. Allow multipurpose and flexible gathering spaces in private and public parking lots. So basically to share these land areas that we have and facilitate more vibrant town centers and downtowns. Expedite building permit processes. Support the development of new business innovation space and flexible light industrial spaces to further diversify the local economy. And housing, of course, as we've all mentioned, housing is dire need up here. So we are looking at adding some new policies to streamline affordable, moderate, and achievable housing. Require that 50% of the units are converted from multifamily to condominiums. Be deed-restricted to levels of affordable. Address the job balance or job housing imbalance in our region and monitor and track that data so we can kind of see where we're going. Which then also support an adaptive management of our short-term rental inventory to also balance that as it relates to our existing short-term rentals and as new lodging products are added to the region. So how do we implement that? Or implement those new policies that we are proposing to amend into our Tahoe Basin Area Plan? And so now I'll go into the implementing regulations and our recommendations of what we can do to hopefully achieve those goals and policies. And so coming on the heels of the state in 2018, Senate Bill 946, the Safe Sidewalk Vending Act, was applied to all local agencies and state agencies. And uniquely, a minor use permit was required for these kinds of uses today. So in our amendments, we are proposing to allow for mobile food trucks or mobile vendors in our town centers. And the idea behind this is to, A, comply with the Senate bill. Make sure, you know, we're keeping up with the state and their direction, but also streamline and facilitate these food-related startup businesses. Because they're sometimes really the stepping stone to our town centers and the economic vitality of those. And we hope that some of these food trucks actually move up into a, you know, commercial space that would be in our town centers. Land use allowances, we took a look at what, you know, after hearing from our stakeholders, what some of those barriers that they experienced. And so we looked at our land use tables, and in the town center specifically, there's a lot of land uses that we really need and would like to see in our town centers that promote walkability, support a year-round economy. And we recognize that those land uses require use permits or require, again, like those barriers that the developers were saying that were just too cumbersome for them to overcome or even want to come to our county. And so some of these that we identified were hotels and motels, eating and drinking facilities, repair services, and the like. And so what we are proposing with our amendments, and this is just one example of a land use table that's contained within in our TBAP. And we looked at, again, what and when is, so for example, in this slide, when an eating and drinking place, which is identified here, when it is allowed use or it's not. And we recognize that they're not allowed. They have some form of regulatory process that they need to go through. So with all the information that we received from the studies and from actually, you know, conversations with the stakeholders, and then also in conjunction with TRPA, we recognize that there is the ability to allow some of these uses by right, but with a maximum square footage. So in other words, we have these size thresholds that are calculated based on their VMT, vehicles' miles traveled. So in other words, an eating and drinking place may be an allowed use if it meets that size or maximum square footage threshold that does not tip the scale of exceeding the maximum VMT allowed for the area. And these vary throughout the different areas. So Kings Beach could be different than Tahoe City. It's just all based on this unique tool that we work with TRPA on. It's called the Project Impact Assessment Tool, or the PIA Tool. And then that helps us determine what the maximum square footage is based on the uses VMT. And we also utilized our Institute of Transportation Engineers Manual to outline and be more like clear of what types of eating and drinking places there are. You know, this could be from a bar to a smoothie shop, right? So we really thought to provide some transparency and/or clarity to the reader and/or the developer or the business owner that wants to come in and open up that smoothie shop, that they can come in and see what their maximum square footages would be and that they could otherwise come in as an allowed use, obtain a business license, and move through the process. So again, the intent behind this is to incent- So again, the intent behind this is to incentivize and streamline um new lodging products, restaurants, retail, you know, local serving land uses. So then we also moved through the document and um and again, hearing from our um stakeholders and and the like. And there was some development standards that were prohibited or just maybe unclear. And so one of them was building length. And so we looked at the building length language. And we are identifying some amendments to the additional mixed-use building lengths that may be allowed. Um, and they may be allowed provided that they're in compliance with our design standards and guidelines. They include construction of achievable housing and public art. Um, that the building length is separated, um you know, along its massing um to provide linear spaces and provide that visual separation. But also to provide features um of such of outdoor eating and display areas, plazas, courtyards, so forth, which would then ultimately assist in breaking up that length. Um, and then fifty, if fifty percent of the building consists of a hundred percent deed-restricted housing, then additional length may also be considered. Um, so the idea behind this change or modification um is to um assist in design and massing and address the massing of these large buildings. Building height was also considered, and um we are proposing some amendments um to include that the maximum building height is by feet rather than stories. So today, the way the code reads is that it says um you know, forty feet or three stories. Well, what's that? You know, what in whether, you know, a story could be twelve feet and then, you know, you're sort of stuck. So we thought, again, to make it clear and really transparent to the reader, um we are just going by feet rather than stories. And then also, um, a building height may be increased for mixed-use projects that include fifty or more T A U's or tourist accommodation units. They provide deed-restricted achievable housing, public art components, comply with the design standards and guidelines of the TBAP and the TRPA scenic threshold standards. So this is really to also identify what we've heard earlier um this morning is the environmentally uh beneficial redevelopment. So um trying to just marry us all together. Um, and then also additional height was considered for, you know, chimneys and flues and other type of um appurtenances that come along with the construction of a larger building. And so the intent behind this um or these amendments to building height is to accommodate development in our town centers that the development community has noted would otherwise be financially infeasible due to restrictions on heights. So also, um, we look or we looked at groundwater and um we are proposing some amendments to the code to include the allowance of um below-grade parking, um which would impact or potentially impact groundwater. Um, and so in the redevelopment of our town centers, if um groundwater intersection may be considered, if the impacts are mitigated so that the off-site groundwater conditions are the same as if the groundwater had never been intercepted. So again, this is tapping into that environmentally beneficial redevelopment um of our town centers. Um, and because as we see also allowing um structures to be designed to go below grade a little bit, um also reduces coverage. So it's it's that balance that we're trying to maintain here. Um, and then in February of twenty twenty-one, the board approved a two-year pilot parking exemption program for our town centers. And so um with these amendments, we are proposing to update the parking sections or amend them to include um some of these um uh results of that program. And so one of them being additions up to a thousand square feet would not require any um parking minimums. And for new construction and lodging, um we're looking at being creative with parking reductions and or shared parking programs. So um, and so the idea behind these proposed amendments is to um spur redevelopment, of course, um and support strategies of that RTTP, which is the Resort um Transpiration Transportation Triangle Program, which um Stephanie spoke to earlier, uh which would increase mobility and reduce the VMT in our region. So um there was a memorandum that was prepared for for TRPA, and it's called the Opticos Missing Middle. And there was um some great recommendations in it. And um so again, by um studying all the information that we had in front of us, we looked at this um and realized that there was ways we could improve our our TBAP. And with these amendments, we are proposing to remove the quote-unquote wedding cake setbacks um and articulation massing requirements. So this one, it's it's a funny one because it's a wedding cake. We call it the wedding cake setback because um the way it's proposed in the uh TBAP today is that your setbacks are dictated based on your proposed uses, so say for your second floor and the neighboring um uses. So we found this was really troublesome because we sometimes didn't know what was in the neighboring structure on their second floor and or uses would change. So you know, if you're basing a setback based on the use at the time, it may not be the same use in the future. So again, for um clarity and transparency, um we are proposing to eliminate these wedding cake setbacks um and just go with the standard setbacks um for the town centers. And then also, uh, we are proposing to reduce or remove parking requirements for multifamily. This is again to better align with the state's direction on um, you know, greater density for single-family areas. Um, and so it would um basically trying to encourage multifamily development. Um, and hopefully would become less burdens- burdensome and um less costly to develop those multifamily units that we need. And then also allow multifamily by right with no use permit or or similar permit, like a zoning clearance and the like. And so what um the idea behind this is to provide an easier process, um prepare standards that are clear and that the developer knows what they are required to build and um you know, how they can build, basically. So density was also looked at, um and it's interesting to note that um for a suitable or excuse me, for a sustainable neighborhood serving shops and services um within a short walking distance of approximately five to ten minutes, have an overall density of sixteen units per acre. Um, our TBAP actually has fifteen dwelling units per acre, so we're not proposing any modifications to our densities in any of our zone districts. Um, but we do want to refine our minimum lot sizes and widths, um which sometimes prevents achieving those maximum densities. So as I mentioned, um, we are recommending a modification to reduce our minimum lot widths and uh the intent behind this is to allow accommodate, you know, smaller lot projects. So which sometimes are affordable, more affordable by design um and would and could potentially um accommodate like multifamily, like duplexes and triplexes and so forth. Um, and so the proposed amendments are to reduce minimum lot widths and then remove a minimum lot area per dwelling units in all residential zone districts to accommodate those smaller dwelling units. So in twenty-one zone districts of our TBAP, um they had what we call a special policy of preferred, affordable, moderate and achievable areas. But did not provide us with any direction as to how to develop these, incentivize them or streamline housing. So for example, multifamily in these preferred, affordable, moderate and achievable areas required a minor use permit for a multifamily um residence to be constructed. So we looked at, we looked at that as, you know, what we heard from from our stakeholders. Um, and so we are proposing to allow for multifamily um outright, provided that a hundred percent of the units are deed-restricted to affordable levels. Also, we're minute, we're um, the minimum lot size is being reduced to two thousand nine hundred and four square feet to accommodate those existing densities that I mentioned before of fifteen dwelling units per acre. And also um to allow for a minimum lot width to be reduced to twenty-five feet to accommodate these smaller lots and also to um take on what the the existing character is of these lots today. So for example, in Kings Beach, um, majority of our lots are e- existing at twenty-five feet wide. So and then applying side setbacks um to a reduction of five feet, and this is really to try and encourage um those duplexes so that they can have a zero-foot setback on the lot line that they share and then five feet on on the, you know, exterior or opposite sides. Um, so the intent behind all of this is also to encourage the development of multifamily housing. Um, hopefully reducing costs and time delays with the use permit processing. Um, and then also just making these require these development standards affordable by design, so matching the existing lot size, you know, recognizing what our existing conditions are. Um, and you know, hopefully accommodate more housing that we we are so desperately needing. In our town centers, and we also looked at single-family land use because we heard from um our community that they do not want new single-family development in our town centers. They did not feel it was appropriate. And so um we looked at the area plan and single-family development um could exist today if, you know, can remain. Um, but we're proposing to allow single-family development if it's part of a mixed-use development. And or at least fifty percent of the single-family residential lots are deed-restricted to affordable housing. Or an affordable component, I should say. And so the idea behind this is to facilitate that mixed-use development in our town centers. Um, while at the same time hearing our developers. And so allowing some of that single-family uses to help offset the costs of the requirements of workforce housing and or the commercial uses and the development of that actual mixed-use project. While still maintaining the goals of our area plan, the community, but also the regional plan um that, you know, brings us all together. So um, moving on to tiny houses, so another housing component. Um, in June of twenty twenty-two, the board adopted a countywide housing code amendment to allow these tiny homes. So we are proposing to add the following language here. I won't, I won't read it, but um really just to to, you know, be consistent with our board's direction um and also the state's direction um as it relates to housing. So there was other miscellaneous um sections of our TBAP that we looked at where we thought we could help improve. Um, and also what we heard from our stakeholders and the community. And so one of them was street frontage improvements. And we identified that there was a lot of inconsistencies between different code sections of the TBAP throughout the TBAP for street frontage improvements. And so with our proposed amendments, we are um fixing those inconsistencies and or identifying to our readers where the street frontage improvements requirements may be throughout the document. So um because there's different sections that we have, so there's section like chapter three of the TBAP is primarily parking, um, street improvements and so forth. And so if the reader doesn't know to go to chapter three, then um we haven't done our job, right? So so that's one of the ideas behind um some of our amendments is to really help the reader facilitate the document and know what's required of them. And so um also some of the free street frontage improvement amendments is also to eliminate redundancies um and then require street frontage improvements of all development. And like was mentioned earlier today in the previous presentations, um, staff intends to bring forward a comprehensive street frontage improvement financing plan to help offset these costs um and burden on the individual development. So signs is another miscellaneous item of our amendments that we're proposing and um we are proposing to eliminate section three point one one sign regulations of our area plan. Um, not to eliminate the requirements for sign regulations, but it was found that we our TBAP um was very outdated, if you will, and um nor was it consistent with TRPA's Code of Ordinances for Signs. So we realized that um our sign regs were were rather old. And so we thought a way to ensure that we are always up to date with TRPA's um code amendments to sign regulations. We are now just recommending that we defer or direct the reader to the TRPA Code of Ordinances for Signs, so chapter thirty-eight. And so the idea behind this is to streamline those sign regulations and make sure we're consistent with TRPA and the goal of the region for signs. But also, um, if any future amendments are performed by TRPA, then we're in step with them, that we will just, you know, our code um and those sign requirements will be also applicable to um the Placer County area. And then in February of twenty twenty-one, the Board of Supervisors adopted the Placer County Code, Article twelve point three two, Lake Tahoe Shore Zone. Um, it was recognized that also there was some conflicts between the um August twenty nineteen TRPA amendments to their coded Code of Ordinances. So um we have updated the um the the TBAP to reflect those changes adopted by the board. And also, again, which is very important, to notify the reader that certain accessory structures um that of like of the shore zone would also be required to comply with our Article twelve point three two. And all, and as always, there's miscellaneous cleanups such as um typos or other minor errors. Um, also uh to direct the reader, you know, we found some deficiencies as I mentioned. Um, so um that, you know, we think would be is is a real benefit. Um, and then the proposed amendments, of course, are subject to CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. And um these amendments will be reviewed in accordance with those and state law. And so with next steps, um, this it's it's exciting to be here. Um, and so following your, the feedback from your commission, um, staff will progress with the public outreach and um you heard a lot of who our partners are, but um specifically we will reach out to and have meetings and also present to them our changes um to the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association, the North Tahoe Business Association, the Tahoe City Downtown Association and our North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council. And so then we hope to come back to your commission in November possibly. Um, and then we work through all of the other um hearing bodies that we need to, um, including the Board of Supervisors, but also TRPA's. So we will have to go through what we call their ARPIC, so Regional Plan Implementation Committee. Um, their Advisory Planning Commission, so similar to your body, and then also the Governing Board of TRPA. So we're hoping um for approvals around March for these proposed amendments. So that's a lot of information, but that does conclude my presentation. Did you have any questions?
Thank you, Stacy and Emily. Appreciate your presentation. Uh, comments and questions from commissioners?
Uh, just one comment, the thank you for that.
Yeah.
And I'm, as also an investor in properties, it it has lured some of my friends away and ourselves that we love this region, but it is really, really hard because you're dealing with two different entities. And to be able to sit here is a privilege to be able to say, well, is there a way that they could be married together where they're the same? You know, TRPA has some great um plans, call it, to make this a great region and keep it the way it should be. So if they could be streamlined, not streamlined, but put together where a developer can come in and go, look, I can go to the county and I can go to TIBA and they're the same. Because it's, it really is a hassle to do that. So it just does my thoughts, but thank you. This has been great.
Um, I just want to say thank you. Good presentation. I actually wrote several notes for lots of questions. And um probably we can pick another time and have those questions asked before you come before us the next time. Um, but appreciate all the work and effort and appreciate that we're all working together for the common good of our our region, and I'm just super proud to see it. So thank you.
Need one online, commissioners online? Anyone online? Commissioners online?
If I could, just uh glad to see these modifications. It's been a long time coming to get what looks like more performance standards in the Tahoe Basin, especially for the county. So uh, my guess is there'll be more as we proceed forward with this, but uh appreciate it and look forward to seeing this uh when it comes back to the commission.
I I I think he's done. I can't see him, so it's hard though, but uh, I I do have one question and it's something that has come up a number of times. If we, if we look at the parking requirement and the change for that. You know, some, an issue that has been presented to us is snow storage. And so I I would want us to be aware of if we're going to reduce the parking requirement, how does that affect snow storage or retaining snow when it has to be moved and not affect neighbors? Because that's, that's the problem that we've seen come to us. And and you probably are already ahead of me in that. Um, but I just wanted to mention that. Okay, um, any, anything else? Well, I'm gonna open up for a public comment at this time. Uh, so, public comment?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Again, Julie Reagan with TRPA. I just wanted to compliment uh, the Placer County, great, the wonderful team for this presentation. And also let you know that our executive team has met with the executive staff uh and with Supervisor Gustafson, just to assure you that we are committed to working through these changes. And we, of course, have our governing board to work with and our stakeholders as well. Uh, but we think this is a a great direction for streamlining uh to the commissioner's point. Uh, it is complicated in Tahoe, but the philosophy behind the regional plan update that we achieved in in twenty twelve was to do this very thing. And we'll work it through as we go. Uh, but we still have a lot of challenges to modernize our regulations. And I think this is a good example of us collaborating uh effectively to do that. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Julie. I don't know if I said, but three minutes, so if you're gonna allow. I don't know. Did I mention that?
No, you did not.
Wow.
I give him all the time he wants.
Uh, good afternoon, members of the planning commission. My name is Steve Kishara. And my company is Sustainable Community Advocates. And Commissioner Powers, very nice to see you. It's been a long time. Good to see you on the commission. Um, my work takes me to all the jurisdictions around the region. So city of South Lake Tahoe, El Dorado County, Douglas County, Washoe County, and of course, Placer County, as well as uh being familiar with the town of Truckee. Uh, but certainly with regard to the basin and TRPA and the partnership here with the county. I really want to join you in commending your staff for the comprehensive analysis. And this is really important because what they're touching on, based on their uh reports like BAE and and the Prosperity Center and all the things they looked at. You know, this is what we hear a lot about from from developers, from people trying to uh, you know, improve our community. Uh, that these are the kinds of regulations that need to be modified to make it easier to lower the barriers uh and the cost of uh, people want to do things. You know, they love Tahoe. They want to, they want to improve the community. And I think this will go a long way towards helping. And as we go along, as Miss Reagan said, we're gonna find some other things, but this is the most comprehensive analysis that I've seen in any governmental jurisdiction in the Tahoe Basin in terms of how we can really help to move forward. So again, I commend your staff. And I hope that it, whether it's today or offline with staff, that you can be ready to uh look at this and approve it when it comes back to you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else here in person? Online? Okay, we'll, we'll close the public comment.
One, one comment before you do that?
Yeah.
Are we closed?
Before I close public comment?
What's that? Oh, no, you closed public comment. I have a comment after you close public.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so I hope that, did I get through a closed public comment? Okay.
Perfect, thank you. So so the schedule you see up there is it is a pretty aggressive schedule as far as getting through the hearing process. Uh, one thing that has not been publicly released are the the actual, the actual TBAP document and the track changes and specific changes. Uh, you know, we, we want to make sure the public has an opportunity to look at those and the commission has a chance to look at those. You got a really good overview and summary of all the changes. I mean, it's quite comprehensive. Uh, but a lot of times it comes, you know, devil's in the details, right? Everybody wants to see exactly what that language is. Uh, so although it's scheduled to come here in November as uh, you know, to hearing, you know, the commission may want to consider, you know, whether or not another workshop is necessary or we get to the track changes. Uh, you know, in advance, I think staff, I'll look to staff as far as the, when they will be released for the upcoming public meetings uh to those groups. So probably be available, I'm assuming before you meet with the groups that are coming up. Uh, but just something for the commission to consider that, uh, you know, whenever you have a you know, a comprehensive planning document like this, you know, everybody wants to see the fine language. And and you know what that really means. So I just want to bring that up.
All right, good. Uh, a closed public comment, we can have a discussion or make more comments or we can move on to the timed item, but based on what EJ shared, any thoughts?
Well, I agree with what you're saying. There's a lot of information here. And I wrote down a few comments, but I think uh, I need to check into it and really study it a little bit more before I really know exactly what we're doing. You know, like a question that uh came up, you know, at our last meeting, uh, we talked about the side lot ordinance that the county has adopted that didn't come to uh Tahoe. And so we had a uh, we had a parcel that had on a corner that actually two had had two front lots. And so little things like that might come up in the process. I uh, lot sizes, you know, I think uh, at least my understanding of Tahoe was um, most of these lots were developed as kind of uh cabin properties. And so oftentimes the lots are already very small, so reducing the size of lots would be something I'd want to maybe check into and understand a little bit better. And also, uh, I noticed one area where they were talking about uh uh, a twenty five foot to the center line of the road. And uh, at any rate, I was kind of wondering if that really, when you're, when you have a road that uh they're plowing the snow on, if that really gives enough uh, enough room for the snow plows to get by if somebody's parked in their driveway. So there's little questions like that. And I think you probably already have them dialed in, but you know, I'll need to look a little bit more before I can really give you any substantial comments. Thank you, though. I appreciate it.
And um, if I may, Mr. Chair. When is that document gonna be out? Like, when will I get to start reading it from cover to cover? As I try and go to sleep at night?
Staff for that. I think we're close.
Mr. Chair, this is um Commissioner Dolgren. I had a comment.
Oh, and is it okay, Robin? I asked, I asked a question. I'm still asking. Can you go next? Do you mind?
Certainly, sorry.
Thanks. No problem. Um, I just wanted to say um, our, we have an internal working group um, that are currently looking at those track changes. So as soon as those are, you know, we get the feedback from our internal working group and when, and it's staff members, um, then we will release um those track changes to you guys.
So we'll get them fairly quickly.
Before your next meeting, yes.
Because I, I actually want to make a comment as I one hundred percent approve your aggressive approach to moving it forward because, you know, we've been waiting a long time. And it's, as Steve said, this is the most comprehensive I've ever seen in my history. And I'm super excited to help implement and get it forward. But if we need a little more time to do a write and and work with Julie to get that process nice and smooth and the community and get all the community on board. I I love the aggressiveness. I'm okay if there's a little more time so that we vet all those questions out. Do the best job we can to support what you've done. Thanks, Robin. Your turn.
Sorry for the interruption. I can't see everybody and what's going on there. Um, yeah, I really loved the presentation. I'm really looking forward to digging into the materials when they get um, when they're available to us. I'm really looking at how the area is implementing the new housing laws like SB nine and SB ten and the streamlining laws SB three thirty and SB thirty five to see how those are gonna help developers um streamline the process that seems to have been in the past extremely onerous. It's looks like you're working towards that. That's all I had.
Okay, excellent. Um, well, we'll go ahead and can, can you hear? Yeah, we'll go ahead and move on to our next timed item. Yeah, let's take, let's, let's take a five minute break. Fair request. Then we'll return at twelve ten. Okay, uh, we'll call this meeting back to order. And we'll go ahead and move on to our third timed item. The Eastern Placer County Project Update. Members of the public may now raise their hand. Press star nine if you're calling in to begin queuing in for public comment. Steve Boline, Bwana?
Bwana?
It's Bielna, but yes. Bielna, supervising planner will be presenting on this item. All right, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. As you mentioned, Steve Bielna, supervising planner out of the uh Tahoe City Office for Planning Services Division. Um, today I'm gonna give you an overview of some of the more prominent uh projects that we have underway in this region of the the county. It's a little difficult to see off of the the screen there, but um this is a a map that indicates um, some of those uh projects within the region in various stages of development. The legend there will identify that some of the projects are uh currently under review. And we've also included a few of the projects that are uh post entitlement approval and in the implementation phase of of development right now. Um, I'm gonna start uh your overview in the Marne's Valley area, work our way over to uh the Lake Tahoe Basin, and then we'll conclude the presentation out in the Olympic Valley area today. So starting out in Marne's Valley, Marne's Valley Superior Self-Storage, um, this is a a project that's located right at the uh county line um adjacent to uh Town of Truckee and uh but within Placer County near the airport. It's located on the northeast uh side of State Route two sixty seven. Um, this project is a proposal for a um, just under sixty eight thousand square foot multi-use facility that contains indoor storage units, uh coworking office space, uh as well as an onsite uh manager or caretaker's unit. Um, as far as uses go for the the site, the um, the office space component of the the project proposal did require the approval of a minor use permit. And a design review was required for the overall um design of the the building. Um, this project did go before the uh zoning administrator in July of this year and was approved, the minor use permit and design review. Um, since there was no appeal filed, the applicants are underway for uh completing their construction drawings. And we can probably anticipate a construction of this project commence um in twenty twenty three. Moving over to the North Star um area, again, still in the Marne's Valley area, uh Ritz Carlton Resonances. Now, this project is part of the North Star Highlands Project that was approved uh in the early two thousands, right around uh two thousand uh five or six. Um, this component of the project proposal proposes eighteen townhome units with twenty two lockoff units. Then result will be approximately forty uh hotel keys or or units. The units themselves are situated to the eastern side of the existing Ritz Carlton um hotel development that's located near your mid-mountain area within the um North Starski Resort. This project will require the approval of a a conditional use permit modification as well as designer view. Um, at this time, we're finalizing the scope of work and contract for the addendum that would be um prepared for this project. And we are targeting uh presentation before the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council uh sometime in this fall and uh could perhaps be before your planning commission as early as uh spring of uh twenty twenty three. Now, moving over to the lake, um, in the Tahoe Vista and Kings Beach area. This project is probably a little uh familiar to you all, uh, the Alpine View Estates Project. Uh, this is the twenty timeshare units, caretakers unit, and four unit multifamily achievable housing structure that your planning commission approved in August eleventh of of this, or actually uh just last month. Um, as you know, um, this, the approval required a conditional use permit modification and designer view agreement um that was prepared. There was no appeal filed and um they're underway with the uh review and approval of the improvement plans and construction drawings um with hopes of breaking ground this year. Now, moving over to the Kings Beach area, thirty nine North Project, uh, this is formerly referred to as the Kings Beach Center um project. Uh, this particular project is actually uh split between two different uh project areas. Um, you can see on the um, the project location near lower right hand corner, um, the uh portion of the project that's located between Raccoon and Fox Streets um is envisioning a proposal for a hundred and fifty three uh room hotel underground parking and ten thousand square feet of retail that would be located on the ground floor level. Um, this um western portion of the the project area would also uh con- contain several detached structures uh with thirty six market rate townhomes dispersed through the site. The eastern portion, um, which is on the lakeside of State Route twenty eight, and um just for reference, it's uh directly across from the Domus uh development in Kings Beach. Um, this portion of the project proposal is for seventy four deed restricted or workforce housing units. Um, as far as project approvals for this, um, this project will require a conditional use permit as well as um design review. Um, the applicant is in the initial phases of review with um both Placer County and TRPA. Um, when all that's completed, a scope of work for the EIR will be finalized and a four-party contract will be prepared. Um, we do anticipate uh that this project, as well as the Tahoe Basin Area Plan Amendments that you've heard from earlier, uh, will be going uh before the North Tahoe Regional Advisor Council in in the fall of this year. Uh, this particular project, as well as the Boatworks project, um, that I'll get to in a second here in the Tahoe City area, are a couple of the projects that would benefit from the uh Tahoe Basin Area Plan Amendments that are being proposed. Uh, rounding out the projects in the Kings Beach area, um, Lakeview um development. Um, this was formerly referred to as the Kings Beach Mixed Use uh redevelopment. Um, this project is uh also located on the um lakeside of State Route twenty eight in the Kings Beach area. And is a proposal for sixteen tourist accommodation units and eleven market rate multifamily dwelling units. Um, in addition to that, on the ground floor level in the forefront of your screen, um, there, they are proposing fourteen hundred square feet of professional office space. Um, this project is in the third round of of review for their environmental um questionnaire that's been submitted. While the ultimate level of environmental review has not been determined at this time, um, we um anticipate that this will likely meet the mitigated negative declaration uh level or perhaps conformity review with the Tahoe Basin Area Plan. Uh, this project will require a conditional use permit and designer view, so it will be brought before your planning commission uh for review and approval. Um, as with um uh projects of that type, um, this uh, this project will go before the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council prior to appearing in your planning commission. And it has gone as an informational item to both the Tahoe Basin Design Site Review Committee as well as the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council. Heading over to Tahoe City, um, first project, um Dollar Creek Housing Project. This is actually a county-led housing project that'll include up to ninety uh rental units as well as sixty four sale housing units. Um, this project is in the project planning uh phase. It has undergone a pre-development meeting. However, we are awaiting the formal application uh for this project uh to be submitted. Um, once that's submitted and the application is to uh deemed complete, we can anticipate um uh what level of environmental review will be ultimately be required for this this project. However, it will require a conditional use permit. So again, this project will uh be brought before your planning commission. Boatworks redevelopment, um, as the name would suggest, this is a redevelopment project uh in the heart of Tahoe City. Uh, the uh building that you can see in the conceptual rendering with the white roof, just for reference, that's the uh Safeway or Lighthouse uh Shopping Center in Tahoe City. Um, the project's bound by um Lake Tahoe as well as uh State Route twenty twenty eight. Um, this project does um propose a new hotel that would contain between eighty to eighty that would contain between eighty to eighty-five, uh, hotel keys. Um, as is typical with, uh, hotel development, there's a number of amenities that are also, uh, proposed which would include conference facilities, uh, pool, restaurant, um, and spa. Also included in this development, it would be thirty-one residential condominium units as well as eight thousand square feet of commercial, um, a commercial retail space that would be fronting, uh, the State Route twenty-eight or Northlake Boulevard. Um, this applicant has, uh, elected to pursue a joint environmental impact report and environmental impact statement um, between Plastra County and TRPA and, uh, does currently have a, uh, four-party contract in place. As far as permitting, this project will require a conditional use permit as well as design review and this and was, uh, presented before the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council as an information item, uh, on June ninth. At this time, the applicant is, uh, currently refining their project, uh, description. After, uh, such time, we will proceed with a a scoping uh, notice preparation and scoping meeting. Rounding out the, uh, Lake Tahoe Development on the west shore of Lake Tahoe, uh, the Homewood Mountain Resort Master Plan. Um, this project was originally, this is one of the projects that's in the implementing, uh, phase of development that I referenced earlier. Uh, this project was approved in two thousand and eleven, um, after such time it was litigated and a settlement agreement was reached. Uh, that approval in two thousand and eleven, um, does allow for a hundred and twenty, uh, residential units as well as a variety of upgrades to the ski resort itself. As I mentioned, um, being that, uh, this project is in the implementation phase, um, the project, uh, is moving forward with the first phase of development, which is Lot Three, uh, which happens to be seven, uh, residential units that are located at the the north base. Um, that portion of the development's been through the design review, uh, approval and um, we anticipate that it could be as soon as this week that they receive their building permits so that they can move forward with, uh, construction that they hope to um, break ground this year on. Moving on to Alpine Meadows. White Wolf Subdivision, uh, this is a, um, project that's located towards the western portion of the Alpine, um, Meadows area. The White Wolf Subdivision's located on the north side of, um, Alpine Meadows Road and is proposing thirty-eight single-family residential lots, uh, fourteen guest units, six employee units and two ski lifts. Um, one of the ski lifts is, uh, actually already been partially constructed with some of the, uh, ski lift towers. Included in this, uh, residential development is, uh, are a number of common area amenities, uh, for the residents and guests such as, uh, ski resort facilities, uh, clubhouse and lodge, equestrian facilities, pool, ice, ice skating rink and tennis courts. Um, this project's currently, uh, in the preparation of the draft environmental impact report phase and the scoping meeting was held uh, in November twenty nineteen. Um, also at this time, the applicants are working with, uh, county staff as well as the Alpine Springs Water, uh, County Water District relative to some of the project requirements for water and sewer for this development. Headed over to the Alp, or I'm sorry, the Olympic Valley area. Also towards the western end of the the valley, just north of the, uh, village area. Granted, the U Conominiums is a proposal for fifty-two for-sale condo hotel units. As typical with the the hotel development, there's also a number of, uh, amenities that are proposed for this development as well, including a teahouse, a pool, hot tubs, um, some fire pits and a, uh, yoga hut and and platforms for for the development. Um, also unique to this development would be a new, uh, roadway connection from Shamani Place. Um, this project is, uh, underway for the preparation of a draft environmental impact report and a scoping meeting was held on May twelfth, where there was a number of comments received from the public and at this time, the project applicant is, um, reviewing, uh, the, all the comments that were received. Back out at the entrance to the Olympic Valley area, the Snow Sports Museum and Community Cultural Center is a proposal for a, uh, twenty thousand square foot, uh, two-story building that would include uh, cultural community center, event space, visitor center and a cafe or, um, cafe museum shop. Um, this project will require the, uh, review and approval of a number of, uh, entitlements, including a general plan amendment, rezone, conditional use permit, parcel map and design review. Um, so it will be, will be brought before your planning commission as well as the board for the rezone and general plan amendment. The, um, environmental impact report is already underway. Uh, the notice preparation comment period for this project did end on April eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-two and the draft environmental impact report is currently, uh, being prepared. Um, final project, uh, to bring forward in the Olympic Valley area and to wrap up this presentation is located right at the intersection of Olympic Valley Road and, um, the roadway that brings you to the resort at Squaw Creek. This is a thirty-acre, uh, parcel that was formerly owned by the, uh, Poulsen family. It does contain an existing single-family dwelling. Um, what the new owners of this, um, property are are looking to do is to subdivide this, uh, residential lot, uh, that would allow for ten residential lots and a very, and a large open space lot. Um, this project is just in the initial phases of of, uh, review and level environmental review has not been determined at this time. So, uh, with that, uh, I'd be happy to, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Alright, thank you, Steve. Very well done. Uh, Commissioners, questions for staff and update?
I'll have a couple of questions, but we can go with public comment.
Okay. Alright, we'll go to public comment and then maybe we'll come back to you. I'll open up public comment. No one in person, no one online? Okay. Uh, we'll close public comment and then, uh, Mr. Johnson, you had some questions?
Let me see this, uh, there was a project proposed where the Falcon Hotel was. What's the status of that project? Is it still going? I didn't see it mentioned, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was, uh, it's probably been almost two years now that the Lakeside, I think we were calling it Lakeside redevelopment. Uh, and that project went to the board. Uh, it it was continued to an open date. Uh, we had not heard anything from the applicant team. We've checked in, you know, you know, over the last year or so, uh, so no momentum on that. So we're really at a standstill right now.
Okay. And it looks like some of the changes we talked about this morning might actually change the cons, the concept of that project, so. Yeah. Let me see, uh, there was some redevelopment lots in Kings Beach. And I think a couple of projects, at least one of the projects you talked about is is one of those.
That's correct. That's a a portion of the, uh, Thirty-nine North Project that, uh, that we looked at earlier, the one that was split between two different um, parcel areas.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
So, as actually we're recently counted, I guess, uh, they're gonna be taken care of now.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay, the east-west development project, uh, is that gone, dead? East-west?
Marne's. Yeah, the Marne's Valley West Parcel, specific plan, uh, yeah, those approvals were rescinded by the board just at their, at their last meeting, or last week. Right? So to, I guess, uh, to come back with that project, they would have to reapply.
Have to start over again?
Yep.
They do need to start over on the entitlements. Uh, but they do have a, an EIR that they can use as a base for purposes of their environmental evaluation, as long as the project stays the same.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have a question, Steve, when, um, you know, early on, when I started, we had, I think, several cell phone tower presentations and I don't know if there's any plan and development in this region for cell phone towers and i- is there any thoughts or projections or when would we see that or is there any plans for for those changes with cell phone towers or not?
So the ma- the majority of, uh, cellular facility approvals are, they're approved at an administrative level.
Okay.
Uh, typically, your commission won't see those. Uh, you know, unless they come to you on appeal. Uh, but there are, you know, s- there are some facilities that do require a use permit and do come straight to your commission. So, you know, I don't know what your, I think Steve could speak to the number of cellular permits that come into the county. I mean, there, there's a lot of.
Yeah, EJ is absolutely right. There's a a number that are handled at the administrative level. Um, within the Tahoe Basin, um, there are some of the facilities that do, depending on their, um, their zone district, will require a conditional use permit and those will be brought before your planning commission. We do have one in-house right now that will be before your commission, um, very soon here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other?
Well, I would say this has been very helpful. You're very busy up here.
Yeah.
So we know what's going on.
Yeah, alright. Well, uh, thank you everyone for attending, uh, today's Planning Commission meeting. That brings us to the end of our agenda, so I'll, I'll adjourn the meeting.